Now, now call the order of the town of Cora Madera, regular town council meeting for Tuesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Casissa?
Here.
Councilmember Avasio?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. Can we stand a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving to item number two, open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor. Is there any public comment not on the agenda in the room? Is there anybody that would like to speak online?
We do not have any hands raised for open time for public comment, and we did not receive emails for this section of the agenda.
Okay, so with that, I will close the open time for public comment and move to item number three, which is presentations. Three A, presentation from County of Marin regarding the model reusable foodware ordinance and request for direction from staff.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and council members. Before you tonight is a presentation from the County of Marin on their model reusable food ordinance. It was adopted by the county last year and goes into effect November tenth of this year, and they have provided their model ordinance to the cities and towns in Marin to consider. And if any cities and towns adopt this model ordinance, they, you can enter into an agreement with the county for enforcement of the ordinance, and cities and towns must adopt the ordinance by May tenth of this year in order to fall under the county's enforcement of the ordinance without any startup fees. The town could consider bringing forward an ordinance after that date and with the only difference being you would need to, the town would need to pay to, to start up the enforcement process. In advance of this presentation, staff sent a letter out to the business community in town, all of the, the, the food service restaurants, et cetera, that we could get addresses for, to let them know that this was going to be on the agenda to receive a presentation from the county. And then we were able to get emails from our third-party business license, HDL. So then I reached out with a copy of the staff report and the agenda for this meeting on Friday and encouraged everyone to take a look to see how it would possibly affect their, their business operations in town. And then we also forwarded it again today as a reminder. So we have received some public comment. We have businesses in attendance tonight in person and also on Zoom to hear more about this reusable foodware ordinance so that they can learn more and ask questions and be present and participate in this process. And Greg Pyrie and Dana Arminino from the county are on Zoom this evening to provide the presentation. And after that point, we would like council to discuss and provide direction to staff on how they wish to proceed.
Right. Would you like me to begin the presentation now? Can you hear me?
Our mics were off.
Okay.
You can go ahead and begin whenever you're ready.
Uh, let me just get slides started. Can you all see those?
You can see your screen.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, council members. Thank you for inviting me to present on the county's reusable foodware ordinance. I'm Dana Arminino. I'm a sustainability planning manager at the Marin County Community Development Agency. Many jurisdictions in the Bay Area and Marin County have already adopted some form of reusable foodware ordinance or a single-use plastics ban. When the county's reusable foodware project initially launched in two thousand and nineteen, three Marin cities had already adopted some form of a single-use plastics ban. So our initial goal with the project was to develop an ordinance that would be accessible and consistent for businesses and residents across the county. The project was paused during the height of the COVID nineteen pandemic and then relaunched in May two thousand and twenty-one with workshops for businesses and residents. And in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, we launched a countywide technical assistance and grant program, which still continues today. The ordinance was adopted by the county in May two thousand and twenty-two, and model ordinance and templates were shared with all the cities and towns in August. Enforcement, as mentioned before, enforcement of the ordinance will not begin until November of this year, and in the meantime, we are focused on proactive education outreach and technical assistance for our businesses. If all Marin jurisdictions choose to adopt the same model ordinance, then the county's environmental health services food facility team can conduct proactive and cost-effective technical assistance and enforcement countywide. Plus, countywide adoption would level the playing field for all food facility operators and make education and outreach easier than a piecemeal Swiss cheese type approach with conflicting rules. So why are jurisdictions in the state, the Bay Area, and Marin County adopting these foodware or single-use plastic ordinances? There are several reasons. First, plastic waste and litter collects in our gutters, storm drains, and creeks, and ultimately gets discharged to our bay and our ocean. Encouraging reuse and recyclable or compostable material would reduce this litter and would reduce the amount of material going towards our landfill or going into our landfill. Adoption of a clear, consistent foodware ordinance would provide guidance and clarity to businesses and the community who generally want to do the right thing but are unclear on what that is. Through our green business program, I've seen a number of businesses that want to do the right thing and often spend more money on bioplastic materials, not knowing that ultimately these materials cannot be composted in Marin and just end up in the landfill. And it's confusing for residents. I'm often asked by friends what to put in what bin. They all want to do the right thing, but it can be exhausting trying to figure out what that is. And finally, switching to reusables can save businesses money. Rethink disposables worked with comforts in San Anselmo and switching to reusables and was able to demonstrate savings of fourteen thousand dollars a year. They've also worked with smaller businesses like a taqueria in San Jose that switched out just their disposable cups, lids, straws, and utensils with reusables, and that site was able to save a net of four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars a year. Some key features of the ordinance include a delay of the enforcement until November and really a focus now and going forward on that proactive education to businesses via the county's existing food facility inspections. We're also offering that direct technical assistance and grants to assist businesses with the transition. Some other key features of the ordinance include an emphasis on reusables. Reusables are the best option and will be required for dine-in foodware. For takeout foodware, the materials can be either fiber-based or aluminum. No bioplastics are allowed under the ordinance. Some other features include limiting takeout accessories like straws and utensils to by request only, and a twenty-five cent itemized fee for disposable cups. And similar to the bag ban fee, the food facility operator would retain the fees collected. And so I want to spend a minute on why the foodware ordinance doesn't allow bioplastics. And again, there's several reasons. There's a wide range of bioplastics, bio-based and biopolymers materials on the market right now, and not all of these products are the same, nor do they break down the same. And these materials look like plastic, but then they also have markings that'll say compostable, but they may not be fully compostable only under certain conditions. Ultimately, these products can end up contaminating both the recycling and the composting streams, and it can be very confusing for businesses and the consumer to know which is the better product and ultimately what goes in what bin. And if these products do end up as litter, as can happen with single-use disposables, they can still clog storm drains and end up in the bay and ocean. And once it there, they can still behave like regular plastics in the way that they decompose, because again, many of these materials require high temperatures and certain conditions to fully break down. And finally, and most importantly, WM Earth Care Marin's main composting facility is certified by the state to produce organic compost for use on our local organic farming operations. Therefore, to avoid contamination of our compost streams, WM Earth Care does not accept bioplastics. Currently in Marin, bioplastics must go in the landfill. And we've heard from other jurisdictions outside Marin County that their compost facility operators are taking similar steps, so we're not actually alone in this. However, the county continually works with WM Earth Care to identify what products and product types are acceptable in their compost operations. So should conditions change, the county could consider updating the, the ordinance, but for now, bioplastics do go in the trash bins in most areas of Marin County. To assist businesses with making that transition to reusables and compliant materials, the county maintains an online purchasing guide that will be updated quarterly with available compliant alternatives that are accepted by WM Earth Care or are recyclable. The ordinance also states that if a compliant product is not currently commercially available, then that product will be exempt. For example, currently hot and cold beverage and soup cuts, cups are not available without a plastic liner, so we have exempted those products. Food operators can still use those products, but they must be disposed of in the trash. There currently no compostable versions that are accepted at WM Earth Care. The county will continue to monitor product availability and update the exempt list annually to give, and will give businesses plenty of time before any enforcement is taken on a product that gets removed from the list. Again, the goal is to provide clarity and consistency for our businesses, not to punish and fine them. We're really focused on that proactive education. And before I conclude the update, I want to circle back on two things. First, I want to reiterate again, enforcement will not begin until November, and even once it begins, the county is very focused on the education side of it. This initiative is really trying to provide clarity for consumers and businesses on what is trash, what is recyclable, and what is compostable. There's currently a lot of confusion out there for both businesses and residents who generally just want to do the right thing but don't know how. And second, our goal in sharing this offer with cities and towns is to provide that clarity and consistency countywide and level the playing field for all food facility operators in Marin County. We're offering to conduct the enforcement via the county environmental health services food facility program on behalf of cities and towns that adopt the model ordinance and the MOU. The cost for this enforcement would then be incorporated into the food inspection fees, so there would be no additional ongoing costs to the cities and towns. I know that was a lot to share. I'm sure you all have questions. I want to thank you again for giving this, giving me this time tonight to present an update on the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And Greg is also here from the county's environmental health services division to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. So we'll open it up to the council. If the council has any questions for staff or the presenter? Fred?
Not at this time. I may have some.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss later. Eli?
Sure. Okay, so on the issue of specific products that can or can't be used, I understand that in the county's proposed ordinance, hot or cold cups, for example, are exempted because you need a plastic liner to contain those liquids and that, you know, at, at this time, there isn't something that's locally compostable with no liner that can meet that need. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there any differentiation in that exemption between liners that are fossil plastic or liners that are bioplastic?
Not at this time, no, because neither can be accepted in the compost stream.
Okay. So can you please educate me a little bit more about what drawbacks, if any environmentally, there are to a BPI-certified PFOS-free bioplastic, other than that it's not accepted by waste management?
I mean, it's still trash. It's still confusing, so it's still going to possibly end up in the compost stream and then possibly contaminate that entire bin of compost. So we end up throwing out things that could be composted, regular food waste. So there's an issue with contamination. It looks like plastic, so you might think if it, if you didn't see the markings, that it could go in the recycle bin, and then it could contaminate that stream. If it doesn't end up getting thrown away properly, it could become litter and not break down in, in the ways that, you know, you would hope, because it doesn't have those high temperatures. So you could still end up with micro particles or even just large cups floating in the ocean.
Okay. I think those are my only questions for now. I may have more. As, this is huge.
Yeah, I, I would like to hear from the public first to see what questions I might have, because these restaurant operators, obviously, they, they're, they're dealing with the heart of it, so I want to hear from them.
So what I'm hearing is after public comment, we would like to open up and during the discussion period, maybe ask a few more clarifying questions. Okay, Rosa, so based on that, would you like to ask a few questions before we take public comment?
I'll wait.
Okay. I do have one question that doesn't need to wait. And I'm going to speak in metaphor first. There's two different ways that people can tell time. One is you mandate everybody has a Swiss watch, or you make Big Ben and everyone can see it in town. So with that metaphor, I'm going to ask who controls the composter and basically who, why are we not addressing this at a single destination source instead of mandating that every small business comply to this? And I understand that the state has a lot also, which you didn't discuss in relation to the county one, but I'm curious if, why that wasn't explored or discussed as a solution. And I know you kind of touched on it, but I think that's a question I have.
Greg, do you want to take the sign and speak to the different operators you've spoken to as well?
Yeah, just good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. Good to see everybody. Good to be on the, on the call with everyone. One thing that taken into account in terms of like consistency, and it's, it's like, we want to start promoting the program, but it's like we want to start with the, with the infrastructure that we have now. So, you know, WM Earth Care being the main composter in town and through our offices with environmental services, we also have that other, other piece of our functions with inspectors where we actually permit the facility, any amendments to the facility come through our office. So right now with the ordinance, we're just using the existing infrastructure that we have with that facility. So it doesn't mean that anything can change with the facility. They will probably have changes coming up with all the thirteen eighty-three changes. So we would be happy to discuss and see what other kind of revisions we could do to the facility, any other types of material types that could come, whether it's bioplastics or separating different, you know, incoming waste streams. So we're open to all that, any kind of discussion. The difficult part with the, with the promoting of the program now is that any change to a large compost facility in terms of permits that we have, going through cow recycle, getting them approved, could be anywhere from six months to two years. And we've, we've talked to with waste management in the last six months about different ideas of changing and permit changes, and I think there will be some in the future. And we'll be happy to answer those and see if we can change waste streams around. But I think as Dana kind of mentioned also is that, you know, this is like a first step working with the infrastructure that we have. And if infrastructures change or waste streams or, or types of compostables, we are all ears to hear it and work with you and collaborate.
So, so what I heard is the county permits the operation of the composter currently, and you would have, the county would have the ability to negotiate what the expectations of that waste stream might be by, is, is, is that what I heard?
Yeah, absolutely. We wouldn't, you know, through, through environmental health, we would be the receiver of an application.
We don't, we don't need to talk about it. That's fine. Thank you for answering. So with that, I'll open it up to public comment. So is there any public in the room that would like to speak or ask? Well, you can only comment on the presentation and basically if, if there is any clarifications that staff would like to make, they can answer after all the comments have been received. So that being said, if you could stand up to the podium, you'll have three minutes. There'll be a timer.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rhonda Cutter. I'm aide supervisor Dennis Redoni and wanted to give a little bit of background on his behalf today to let you know that we're really excited to be bringing this to the different cities and towns. And just a few points of clarification, you know, part of the reason we are advocating for this ordinance is, as you know, it was brought to our attention by a couple of fourth graders over four years ago. These little girls, they wanted to ban single-use straws. And so we started out looking at just banning straws and realized that that the complex problems creating a lot of plastics in our environment was way beyond that and that the really the best way to get plastics out of our waste stream is to look at this as a a bigger picture. So that began this project, and it's taken a long time because of COVID. We are really trying to work hard with all our businesses. We know it's a real challenge, and there are exemptions that can be made on an individual basis, working with the cities as you transition, I mean, working with our environmental health as we transition. Each, each business needs to get the technical assistance, and that's what we have to help offer grant programs to help you transition. So if you do choose to adopt it, there are ways to make it easier. And I just want to address the organics a bit. We started Marin Organic a long time ago in the eighties. It's really created a lot of success in our ranches and in our farming in West Marin and in Sonoma. All of these vineyards, they want organic compost. There's, there is not a market for non-organic compost for the most part locally, and I invite you all to have a tour of the compost facility. We were able to get one. I think it's very enlightening, and you can really see the challenges that they have in dealing with compost materials. So because we have such a high demand for organic compost, that really helps us in getting the bioplastics out of the waste stream. So just wanted to add those few comments and just to say that Supervisor Redoni, this is a project that's very important to him. A lot of our district is on the coast, either here in the canal area, Corte Madera, and also on the Pacific coast. And we see a lot of trash going out into the environment. We'd really like to stem that. So thank you for your consideration, and we're here to help in any way that we can. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi. Just really quick, quickly, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Janice Reynolds, and I work with my colleague Susan Hop, and we are the technical assistants. And we have already been helping businesses around the county to comply with the ordinance. And I just want to let people know that most people are, are in compliance already or very close to it. So it's not as big of a jump as it kind of seems to be really. And, and then the, the long and short of it is, is we're really trying to create less waste, so we don't have to deal with all these problems. So that's the, the long goal of all of this. So we're available to help anybody, and there is a grant program of six hundred dollars per grant to help a business do whatever they need to do to change. So thank you.
Is there anyone else seated that would like to speak? No. So given that, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
We have a hand up from Chris Davis. And Chris, you should be able to speak.
No. Good evening, everybody. This is Chris Davis. I am the owner of Teaspoon in the Corte Madera Town Center. Probably many of you have already been through there with your children. We're just off the ground and seeing what we purvey, I want to advise that, you know, the larger experience of getting a boba is seeing the layers in the drink and then confirming the contents, your toppings. And we put it in a sealed cup so that it seals on the top, and that allows the consumer to shake the contents and then enjoy their drink. I can't do that with snap lids, and I can't convey the customer experience unless they can see into the contents of the cup. I would say a secondary item would be that when we seal these cups, it enables us to transfer four, six, eight, or ten at a time in a bag, and they can be stacked upright as well as upside down. And there's really no other way to purvey these drinks other than what we're doing. And I want to say I'm all about incorporating progress. We currently use bamboo straws. But I think until we can, as a collective, identify an alternative for what I purvey, I think it would be a gross overreach to mandate that my little, my little shop reduce the experience and purvey these drinks in a cup you cannot see through or seal. Thank you.
Next, we have Renaud de Rosier, and sorry if I mispronounced that. And you should be able to speak now.
Hi there. My name is Renaud de Rosier. I work at Amy's Kitchen. And first, I want to say we're, we're highly supportive of a move to sustainable packaging. In fact, five years ago at this point, we transitioned a very complex packaging portfolio at our drive-throughs to one hundred percent compostable packaging. The problem that we have is, is not with the idea here, but with the approach. Dana spoke to this challenge of sort of a Swiss cheese approach, to use your words, where you know, you end up in a situation where everyone tries to define things in their own ways, and you end up with confusion. Unfortunately, I fear that's exactly what's happening here. Coming from a place of good intent, Marin is trying to create its own definition for something that exists broadly at the national level. There is indeed a definition of compostable products. There's an ASTM standard and a certifying body that demonstrates the viability of these materials. And the problem with trying to carve out a subsection of it is it's impossible. We heard about the, the boba shop as, as one example. It's not the only one. If you look at any hot food, if you look at a coffee cup, it's simply impossible to manage those materials with online fibers. We might want that to not be the case, but that is the case, and it always will be, which means this ordinance, if it's passed, will essentially lock in a long-term commitment to fossil-based conventional plastics, basically the opposite of what we're trying to do here. If we're trying to make progress, we need to get to a place where we are actually using the new technologies that are available. And despite some confusion around the fact that it's compostables causing the contamination, it is not. It's the, the look-alike products, right? It's the conventional polyethylene and polystyrene and, and PET packaging that is causing problems. Now, certainly it is the case that it's a confusing landscape right now, and that's why really we advocate for using BPI certification as that common standard that really defines what is compostable and what is not. The challenge here is that we are missing the key question, and this was alluded to by one of the council members earlier, but we need to be asking the facility that accepts these materials to broaden the list of what they accept rather than putting the burden on all the businesses and all the consumers in Marin County. Thank you.
Um, we do not have any other hands raised, but we did receive a public comment from Jennifer Fuhitani. Let me just start my timer. If the reusable foodware ordinance is adopted, we would need the support of the county in notifying and communicating to all residents living within the county. Adopting this new ordinance will be detrimental to our takeout service mainly because we serve curries, soups, et cetera. We have tested out biodegrade. We have tested out biodegradable soup containers in the past, only to receive backlash that they have caused leakish when transported. The market is very slim for affordable containers, especially at the volume we do. If we could participate in some sort of reusable container program where residents are all informed and voluntarily participate, this will help our business in maintaining a healthy relationship with our patrons. We feel the ban could create an economic hardship. However, we would love to join in with coming up with a solution to reduce waste while keeping all of our patrons informed. If adopted, we would appreciate signage, postings, more meetings and letters informing all residents of the new ordinance. We would also request support in finding and educating our staff and leaders on acceptable and cost-efficient containers and where to find them. Thanks for hearing us out. We hope that we can be part of the solution together. And this is from Jennifer Fuhitani of Bermetown. And looking back at the Zoom, we don't have any additional hands raised.
Okay. Based on that, is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Okay. So with that, we'll close a public comment. And we'll bring it back to the council if there's any discussion or further questions that need to be asked. I'll look to Fred first.
I have questions. They're more staff related than the technical part of this. If I have this right, if we adopt before May 10th, I think, then the county will do the enforcement part of it? I'm sorry, what's that?
The county has a template memorandum of understanding that the town would need to enter into for enforcement.
Okay. And if it's after May 10th, we do our own enforcement then?
No. If, if we adopt, as I understand it, if we adopt the ordinance as is with no changes, then the county is willing to enforce it. If we pass it by May 10th, they'll waive the enforcement fee. They will still enforce it if we enter into the MOU and we adopt the ordinance, but if we don't do it on their schedule, then the town will have to pay the county about $6,000 plus.
And then I'm sorry, would the county still do the enforcement part then by us paying that or is that like a separate fee?
No, they would still do that. And although it hasn't been any of the materials presented, I understand from the deputy county council I spoke with today, there will be no additional annual fee for enforcement. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. It would be a one-time onboarding fee if the town adopted the ordinance and requested enforcement by the county after May 10th to 2023. So you guys could adopt it anytime. There would just be that one-time onboarding fee so that we could rework our systems to add your food facility operators in.
Okay. And then after that, that it would take effect, I think November, sometime in November, correct?
The county's ordinance is November 10th, 2023, correct?
How would our ordinance work? In other words, if we adopted this, say in, in May, would it still go into effect? Again, I'm trying to figure out the timing as we
Let's be adopt the ordinance that the county wants. We would keep the same effective date.
Okay. Then the question is, is that sufficient time for businesses? Because then you're looking at, you know, if we adopt, I'll just say if we adopt in May sometime to meet that deadline and they're going to start enforcing in November, I believe, does that give our businesses sufficient time to gear up for this?
Well, and again, we're going to be very focused on the proactive education through those regular visits by food facilities. So yeah, we're, we're gonna really be working with the businesses to plan and transition. And the countywide technical assistance is available currently countywide, even if the jurisdiction doesn't adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Sorry, just lost my train of thought. How do, how does the county enforcement, how do they interact? How can I say this? I know how our enforcement people interact with our residents. How does a county, do you know how, how the county interacts with businesses? I know that's a loaded question. It's just according to those word more customer service driven, no offense to the county, I'm just trying to figure out how the county comes, the perspective on that part of it is.
Yeah, Greg, do you want to take this?
Yeah, that's actually just a very good question. It's excellent question. And environmental services, you know, our staff, you know, we're the staff, that's the, you know, the like the permitting agency for all the food facilities in the county, unincorporated cities and that, and the towns. So we visit every food facility, whether it's six months or one time a year. And that's all through state code, state health and safety code, where we look at all different types of health and safety issues. So what our staff would do is that during that inspection, you know, it could last anywhere from, you know, 30 minutes to, to four hours, depending on what kind of food facility are. So our staff would, once they're done with that type of facility and it's the health and safety code is done, we would then bring and do the educational related to the food where, you know, totally separate type of regulation. And with all of our inspectors and everything we do within our office, we always want to do education and outreach first. The last thing we want to do is enforcement. So even though like if you pass the ordinance, you know, tomorrow, sure, we're still doing outreach right now and we would continue that. And come November, sure, that's, that's an enforcement date, but even at that time, you know, that would be one of the first dates that our inspectors would go out and do any kind of, you know, enforcement. But given that it's every six months or a year, there's still going to be a lot of education after that. So you could be looking at anywhere from, you know, six months after that November or any kind of enforcement starting. So we've got a long time for a lot of education or outreach to be done. So that's a little brief.
Okay, thanks. And if I hear you right, it almost sounds like you're working with businesses. You don't have the ha-ha, got you approach type thing. Again, you try to work with them to resolve.
Oh, absolutely. Even with our, even with our regular positions with the health and safety code, it's all education first. And the, the, you know, just like any of us in the public service, anytime you can get that rapport going with owners and operators, get the dialogue. What are your needs? How can we assist with different types of compostables? You know, that's our goal.
Okay, thanks. Staff is happy because I'm directing questions to the county. Which, another question, I know we had Teaspoon, I think Amy's in Bermetown, all had concerns regarding materials. How does a county, I know there's technical assistance, how does that work with those businesses to try to help them get over this hump?
Well, I think during the technical service visit and, and maybe we can get Janice to speak to it because she's out there doing it, but she would, they typically meet with the business and start looking through the materials that they're using now. Identify if there's something like a hot cup or a cold cup that has that lining for which there's not an alternative. Let them know that those are exempt. Try to identify wherever possible, trying to switch to a reuse item, encouraging people to bring in their own reuse for refill, providing education on how to properly refill, that type of thing. Again, reusables are best. And then identify where possible a compliant alternative. You know, I, I can't speak to the specific nature of the boba cup. I'd have to, you know, defer to our technical experts on that. But it, it is, again, it's that process of identifying what's the business's needs and what's the best path forward.
Okay. And then when you go through that process, is there wind up being an additional cost to the business for those materials, which could raise their cost of goods, which gets passed on?
It, it can. It depends. We, we have all the current, a lot of the current prices on that product guide list. We do have the grants available for making that initial transition either to purchasing reusables or purchasing a compliant alternative. We do try and encourage facilities to use what stock they can, you know, what they have now. We're not interested in them throwing everything out and starting fresh. Use what they have and then understand what maybe is a better alternative for the next orders.
Okay. And then do you know what towns in Marin have adopted the ordinance already or maybe in process to, or have any of them adopted but tweaked it?
Tiburon has adopted the model ordinance as is. Fairfax and San Anselmo, who already had existing ordinances that were very similar to the counties, we actually based ours on their existing ordinances. They're in the process of adopting the model ordinance so that they can defer enforcement to the county environmental hall services. And I believe City of Nevada is also, you know, working through the process as well and considering it.
Okay, thanks. And just one quick comment. I also heard that you have a grant program, correct? Is that $600 per business?
Correct.
Okay. Just something for our staff to consider if we get to that point. If we can create potentially our own additional, I want to say grant program just for the, those businesses within Corte Madera, just to further assist them on top of what the county offers. I think would just, again, help our businesses out. I may have more, but that's it for now. Thanks.
I want to thank the restaurants that are here tonight, and I really want to make sure that we're making sure that this happens in a way that, that works for you. On the subject of the hot containers from Bermetown and the reusable containers, is this the kind of exception that the county would be willing to grant? So it sounds like that is something that, that could be workable. However, I buy a lot of hot soups at supermarkets in those cardboard containers and they seem to, they seem to do the job. But I'm concerned about the flatware thing. I know Amy's, you know, if you have to serve actual metal washable utensils in restaurants and they're not set up to do that, they don't have a dishwasher. Is that the kind of exception that, that you would look at? I mean, as long as there's flexibility in this and working with the restaurants individually and not creating unfair burdens, then it becomes sort of a different, I, I would, I would look at it more favorably. So I guess I want to know about the exceptions and how workable are they for the restaurants?
I, I don't know that we would be, we would give an exception for the reusable for dine-in requirement just because a facility doesn't want to add dishwashing capability. We have seen in many of the case, the case studies that even that small taqueria was able to add dishwashing capabilities. There, there are small dishwashers. There's a lot of different opportunities. So I, I would be very hesitant to just do a blanket exemption for that because there are ways to employ reusables and ultimately then save a lot of money and reduce a lot of waste. A lot of energy goes into creating these materials that get used for 20 minutes while they eat a meal. So they're looking at that big picture. I, I would be hesitant to give too many exemptions. We want to find solutions and there are a lot of opportunities for those solutions.
Can I just add on? The, the biggest opportunity to save money is to, to change from a throwaway to a reusable option for dine-in. And a lot of times the restaurants, they may have a three-part dishwashing sink and they can also do washing in that as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then just another question on bioplastics. From what I've read, they are considered to be something that will be working within the future. So how long is it likely to be before the county is able to actually recycle these intended to be recyclable or biodegrade, these intended to be biodegradable tools? I mean, it sounds like we're playing kind of catch-up here where we're creating an ordinance to work with the system that we already have, knowing that a better system's coming, right? So how, is it a long window of time before we're able to get better?
I think I, I want to reiterate a point that Rhonda made in that yes, some of those materials do break down in a commercial compost facility and do become compost, but it is not certified organic compost. When, you know, the state comes and tests, that would not pass as organic compost that they then can be used on our, you know, very proudly organic ranches. It is compost that needs to find a home and it is not as valuable a commodity. And so a lot of compost facilities are starting to really look hard at that because they're ending up with a lot of compost that can't be used or sold to, you know, a valuable operation that operates as an organic vineyard or an organic dairy. So we, we kind of want to think about that as well. If the materials could break down in such a way that they could still be applied to our organic ranch lands and farmlands, then, you know, we, we could rethink it. But I, I would be hesitant to rework the whole thing just to end up with compost that doesn't have a home.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Rosa? Oh, did you want to respond to that?
Oh, I just wanted to, I could add one more thing about the bio-based plastics. They still contain fossil fuel chemicals in them. And that's what makes them go together. So it's not, it's not like, you know, bio-based plastics or, or, or something that we really want to have for the future anyway. And, and, and they, they, again, they don't break down. They break down like plastic. And so you get the microplastics. And you get that stuff in the soil and it compromises the soil. And, and I think, you know, we need to really start focusing on the soil health. And for somebody like Amy's, in fact, you know, they, they grow organic or they serve organic foods. So, you know, they need to have the organic soil to, you know, do what they do too. So just want to add that. Thank you.
Are you, are you, are you part of the public?
I am.
Unfortunately, a public comment was so, Rosa?
Okay. I cannot tell you how many times I have stood in front of bins in a restaurant and thought, I have no idea where this goes. And I'll think I know it makes sense, but it seems that there's something else in that bin already that negates my choice. So I'm wondering about, you know, going back to the analogy that Charles used, stepping back further and saying, do we have a sorting problem that you have the wrong, you know, you, you have your organic compost not being organic because the wrong thing has been thrown into, in the wrong bin. And to step back and sort of say, could we do a better job of making it clear where things go? And I understand that you're working on that for this next phase. But I would love to see, to find out what strides you could make if you were able to make that clearer now. I also have a lot of other, you know, just sort of practical questions. One of the issues was, it says that no city or town shall purchase or acquire non-reusable plastic foodware for use in any city or town. And organizations or individuals using city facilities shall use reusable or compliant foodware and compliant foodware accessories. So does that mean that every birthday party in the park would be non-compliance if they brought in plastic spoons and forks? And, you know, how does that get looked at? I have another question about the 25 cents. Does that get added before, after tax? Anyway, I just have a thousand questions of how, you know, how this can be done. How it can be carried out is the law. And then also is there a more upstream solution or downstream solution to getting organic waste where it belongs? I see I confused you with too many questions.
Are you asking staff or the county?
Oh, I'm asking the county.
Okay. I mean, signage is very important. We're definitely working on that. So clarity of the bins to show what needs to go in each bin. We, we are working on that to dispel that customer confusion. It does take time. And then regarding the language around events at city facilities, that is an adaption of the county's ordinance where the county basically said, if it's a county event and the county is hosting it, we are going to walk our talk and apply this ordinance to our own facilities and operations. So that was what that was. If county department is contracting to do something, if the county is hosting something, we wanted to make sure that we were compliant with the ordinance as well. So when we created the model ordinance, we thought the cities and towns would want that as well, but that, that is up to ultimately your choice. It does not imply that someone, a resident going to a park to set up their own birthday party would be regulated under this. It would be for events where you are the purchaser and the host or the contractor, you know, contracting with a caterer.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I Okay, yeah, I, I, I received something earlier. David. Said the ops, opposite of that. Um. But I, I'll leave it to um. Staff to look into? Or, or, or clarify. Here we go.
I, I, I think there are a number of questions um, regarding the imposition of the county. About the town's operations. It is unusual. For the county to uh. Pass something that affects. The city's own jurisdiction and operation. So this is unusual. Um, the county is asking the town to adopt an ordinance. For which violations by the town could be subject to pretty high penalties. So. As your attorney, I couldn't recommend that you do that. I have had a conversation with one, the deputy county council who says the county would be okay. With an amendment. Making it clear. The town would not be fined, but that's not what I'm hearing tonight. So I think that's something. We would definitely need to have some, some clarity. I think the other question is it. It says this applies to town-sponsored events. However, there's no definition of what a town-sponsored event is. And I know that. We work in cooperation with a number of community organizations that hold events and, and town may. Do some assistance with traffic control or some other things. It isn't clear then. If those events would be subject. So I, I think in terms of. Um, the implications for the town, there's, there's a lot of outstanding questions.
And to clarify, I was not contradicting what county council told you. Again, this was our thought when we did it for ourselves was that we wanted to walk our own talk. If. You know, we do not want to contradict or create any, you know. Issues with your own operations. So that section can be amended as the town wishes.
Um, about the, and, and hey, sorry to harp on this, but. So the 25 cents. Is that? To be added before or after tax?
I believe it's a line item before taxes. So it'd be like a per, a purchase.
So it would be taxed. Okay. Thank you.
And that'd be payable to the county?
No, the uh, rest, the food facility operate, operator retains that fee. Similar to the bag ban ordinances that are already in place.
Uh, I would just like to offer um, a comment. I'm sorry, our zero waste specialist isn't here from DPW to talk about the waste stream. Because that is an important part of this and having more um. Consistent rules throughout the um, county will help us with the composting in this. Feature. And then we have a lot of other work to do um, with increasing consistent signage. And in the county right now, I think there's over thirty-six different contracts with different cities and jurisdictions that. Hollow away waste. And there's multiple different vendors and that's something that our zero waste team is going to be looking at that you're probably all very familiar with. So that's something we can all work together, the different cities and towns um, to try to just create more consistency. And we are working on improving signage. There, we didn't bring the samples today, but we can share that with you. So. That Janice and Susan created some. That, that we hope would be helpful.
So ultimately, I feel like we opened it back up and wanted to ask questions after, but now I think there also needs to be. Um, if we're done with questions, a kind of communication with the goal of. Uh, discussing the presentation and providing directions to staff about whether we proceed with uh, exploring, adopting the ordinance as is, modifying it. Um, not adopting it and um, either uh, not addressing it or address it ourselves. Um, and come to an understanding about the state enforcement um, moving forward. Uh. So given that, I think we should have a discussion.
Can I go first?
Of course.
Um, I really had heart to support this. I want to see it happen. I think that it's going to happen. And I like that the county has initiated. I like that you studied the San Anselmo. Um, model. So I want to see Quater Madera be on board with this. Environmental approach to life in general. Um, I do think the town and the town events should also comply. I think that. Events held at the rec center should have uh, guidelines for what kind of uh, materials that we want them to use. I think however, that the fines, that the, I don't think the county should have the ability to fine the town or any um. Tenant of the town uh, for those things. So maybe that's where the exception comes in, but. I, I agree that the town should walk the walk too. I mean. Even though our big events like Fourth of July and Oktoberfest, you know, there might be an added expense to those kinds of things. The, it's also, they're huge waste events. And so to do it right is important. Um, that said, I really think that working with the individual businesses and making sure that they have. Access to affordable. Functional. Items, you know, for, for, for hot entrees and curries and, and uh. Soups and all of that. I mean, if we have sources of those things for our businesses, I think that's a, a really good start. Um, but I, I'd love to see a way to make it happen. I mean, I think we, we kind of have to. I don't, I don't think Quater Madera can be. The leader in rejecting the county ordinance on foodware. I think we have to figure a way to make it work. Just my thoughts.
Thank you for sharing. Eli.
Thanks, Pat. I, I think you put that really well. Um, you know, I think fundamentally what we're trying to decide tonight is, do we think we want to move forward with something along the lines of the county ordinance, maybe with. Whatever small changes we can, you know, work out with our attorney and with county council to, to make it more palatable. To the town where there might be certain issues, especially around enforcement that could be otherwise red lines for us. Um, you know, I think looking at. The county ordinance, I like the bulk of it. I certainly agree with what it's trying to do. There are also parts of it that I. Have questions about or I'm not comfortable with. Um, but I, you know, I think it's tough because you have to look at this thing in totality. Um. I think there's a lot of different angles from which to approach this issue, this question. Uh, and I think many of them are valid. Yeah. And some of them are contradictory and still both valid. So. It's a very tough issue. Um, I've spent a lot of time on this over the last couple of weeks and my head is like still. A little bit spinning about this. Thank you very much, Rhonda and Janice for, for your time um, helping me understand this issue. Um, you know, I think. I think that we definitely need to curb throwaway culture, right? I think that's important. I think we need to pivot hard away from fossil fuels. You know, I think that's clear. Um, you know, we. Uh, like you said, you know, we probably shouldn't be using single-use. Uh, materials for dine-in, right? Um, and I think, so then what the, you know, the question in my mind then turns to like, so what is the. Burden that falls on our businesses if we're trying to make this shift together? And what tools are we putting out there to support them so that we're not just kind of leaving them high and dry? Uh, as we make this pivot. And so it was really helpful for me to hear tonight. Um, about, you know, the, the tools and the support that the county is putting forward to help businesses. It was great to hear that most of our local businesses. Are already in compliance. That's not something that I had really understood. Um, I've actually got, you know, the two main tools I, I would say that the county has developed to help local businesses, the exempt list. And the Marin County reusable or disposable purchasing guide. I've got both of those open here. So I see kind of what you guys are, are starting to put forward and develop. Definitely understand as, as I know you do, and I, I know our businesses do, uh, that the market for. Reusable or compostable, single-use, uh, you know, foodware is not fully developed yet and it's, there's no perfect solution here. There's nothing that, you know, that. That's why we have the exempt list, right? There's some items where you just can't. Make it work at this point in time. Um, and so I, I appreciate that we've got, uh, you know, these, these, you know, support tools available for businesses. Even more importantly, I was really glad to hear tonight, Janice, that businesses can meet with you because I think that's most critical, right? Like if I'm a small business owner. The cost of, the cost of, of switching, whether it's a cost or whether it ends up to be a savings, as we heard is the case sometimes. That's one thing, but a whole nother thing is like my time trying to wrap my head around what the regulations are. And what's out there and like, I've got no clue. So the fact that the county has. Done a lot of this research already and is bringing that forward. And then that I as a business owner can sit down with you, Janice, and say. Okay, can you please walk me through what we've got out here? Here are the things I sell. How can I get these to customers, you know, in a way that's compliant? Um, or if it, or if there's no alternative, what's exempt? Um, so I think that's super helpful. You know, and, and it doesn't solve all the questions, right? I think again, the, a big issue I think is restaurants that don't have dishwashers. That's, you know, if we're talking about like renovating a kitchen or something, that's not trivial. That's, that's a, a real problem. So I want to look at whether there's something we could do if we do adopt something along these lines. To help any businesses that really need, uh, you know, help in making any like infrastructure changes. Um. You know, Rhonda, I know your district out in like West Marin, you've got a lot of businesses on septic. That's really hard. You can't add a dishwasher if you're, if you're on a septic system. So I think we need to really. Flesh out a little more. And I'm glad to hear we've got some time before we need to adopt this and then some time still after that before enforcement goes into effect. To really start to develop how we work with these businesses if they're in a situation where it's not an easy switch, where they don't have dishwashers or, you know, something like that. Um, and be able to kind of put together. A framework there to help them out. Um, so I, I think I see kind of the path forward, uh. Taking shape here. Again, it, it's not a perfect solution. There are elements of it that I'm not happy with it. The cup charge frankly is, is one thing that really bugs me. Um, I, I get the idea there. I'm, I'm not sure that I agree with, with the way in which, you know, it's being proposed that we go about it. Um, on the whole, I think I'm, I'd be. Ready to. Ask staff to move forward and working with the county to see if we can continue to mold this into something that's acceptable to the county and acceptable to the town. And I think that's where I'm going to leave it right now.
Do you mind if I speak?
Oh, go ahead.
I, I know it's out of, but um, I'm a little contrarian to the last two speakers. Uh, I have a lot of anxiety and basically. When I have anxiety, then it makes it really hard to just proceed with an ordinance. And I think it's. A lot that I don't hear my town. Businesses feeling involved in the discussion. They're bringing up issues quite easily about conflicts with their business models. And honestly, they've struggled through COVID. Right? They, they basically were forced to modify once before their total operation, which now the county is asking them to correct. Um, while they try to struggle to maintain profitability and other things. And these are not. The McDonald's of the world. These are the people that are countering the McDonald's that are saying it's still too much. And basically, you know. If we just stuck with straws, it would be a real easy decision, but because you're trying to comprehensively deal with. All the issues, but don't have all the answers yet. And you're asking me, I feel like this is a working session. And you, you know, when an ordinance comes to me, usually if it's been well-vetted in our town. It's a no-brainer. There's no questions. We don't have s- s- any like comments. It's just well-known. We know all the outcomes and we can accept it. And that's why it causes me incredible anxiety because the unknown of how it really will impact, how it really is enforced. The fact that we're asked to do it ahead of time and then you go talk to the, to the, to, to the businesses and inform them afterwards. That's not education. That's not public outreach. That's basically compliance. Uh, lessons, right? Like, uh, and. I really do not believe that the grants or anything are anywhere close to being able to compensate the, the businesses. Uh, to the upgrade in my current understanding. I do have issues with mandating infrastructural upgrades for dishwashers. I do. Don't even think it's about the infrastructure. I think my big problem is. I've heard many retailers that are trying to run businesses, especially food retail, struggling to even get employees to show up. And there are certain businesses that basically can't even stay open and they're not rolling out new franchises because the complexities of being a manager and staffing these facilities. And we're asking them to, to come up with another staff. So. You know, staff with a minimum wage, just doing dishwashing and bussing in a, in a, in a, a business model that didn't support that is way more money than I think we're really discussing and it causes me anxiety. And so with that. You know, um. There's all kinds of things I hear, you know, oh, we, we really want just organic compost for, for our vineyards and our farms. Well, Quater Madera doesn't have a vineyard or farm. And we're not in the business of a commodity-based production of compost. Right? So to me. Even if you could just break even and send that plastic mush, you know, the state has whole new um. Uh, reclaim issues. Like we talked about it last year. We have to have like five hundred thousand tons of just. Boo that we produce and put it back into, you know, uh, and pay for it as a town. And it's like, I don't hear any discussion of that. And so. I just, I just really want you to succeed, but I personally do not feel like. Enacting this ordinance and forcing it upon, you know. Free enterprise is in the best interest of the free enterprise, myself as an elected official. Or the environment whole, because you're not able to actually address, you know, huge gaps in the waste stream already. And that's why I guess I brought up. The waste stream discussion is, and it, it, you know, it's not a critique of even the county. It's, it's a broader discussion about whether the state or the federal government should really take responsibility for all of this. The waste stream, the recycling, all of it. Is. Off the charts, uncontrolled and basically not meeting society's needs. And so the fact that we have to do it at the local level and ask every resident, every Swiss watchmaking person. To deal with it instead of a larger solution that really solves the problems holistically. That's what I'm really struggling with and it has nothing to do with what was brought to the table today. And so that's why I also struggle with it because I think that adopting the ordinance isn't really going to solve the problem at all. It's just going to add more complexity to telling time when I could have done it much easier. Right? Um, and so. That's how I really feel and I need to share that. Okay? Um, because I think it'll really affect people that. You know, I go to, their kids go to my school. They're really struggling and I don't think they need extra. Rules in their lives and compliance. I think they just need to, to keep. Going at this point. And, and so that's really how I feel. So. Thanks for listening and I'll open it up to the other council.
Thank you. You know, uh, my husband and I owned a Brixton martyr business in San Francisco for forty years. And. You know, when I was a little kid. I thought it would be really great to own a store because, you know, you just go and you push the button and the cash register opens and you take out money. And then when I owned a business for forty years, I thought. You better hope there's some money in that cash register. So. What I'm getting at is that. You know, bit, small businesses. Thrive or die by a thousand tiny cuts. And I agree with our mayor that, you know, having gone through COVID, what a nightmare. You know, luckily we sold our business five years before that. It was the smartest thing we ever did. Um, but um. You know, it's really, really hard. And when these little changes come, it's not, it's not just your money. It's also your time. You're a small person trying to run a business. And you don't have time for another thing that's going to take yours, your eye off the ball. Of, you know, doing what businesses go into business for is to make money. To, to survive. So. My concern is, like I said, you know, if we can't even get things in the right bins now. And now we're going to have exceptions for plastic line cups. That. Don't go in with the other cups. Um, you know, we are just, we're just. I think we need to solve the little problem first. And then get to the big problem. And I just don't like, I, I agree. I don't think that this is, we, I need a lot more information and I think the county needs to give us a lot more specifics. About how it's going to affect our citizens because. You know, that's our job as council members is to, you know, under, to at least if we can't. Shield them from all these things, be able to explain it to them. So, um, I do hope that we can get some clarity and that, you know, we can get to something that is agreeable. And helpful. And, and a positive step.
Thanks. Um, on a high level, I can support this, but that's on a high level. I think there's a lot more work that we're going to need to do. When I say we. It's the county and it's also staff to get to a point where we can have an ordinance that, that's workable. For, not just for us, but mostly for our businesses. But I think we're a long ways away from that. Um. It seems like there's a number of, I want to say legal type issues that I think Amy, you may have to work out. There's a lot of questions like Rosa have, you have just from a. Practical standpoint that needs clarification. So again, I, I can support, but again, I just think we have a way, we have, we have a ways to go. Um. I'm still on the thing again, if we do this, again, I'm getting way ahead of myself. I think we need to have a grant program, Quater Madera grant program. Because I think we need to provide some kind of support to, to our businesses. I think also, um, depending again, you're. I think also, um, depending again, if you're looking at maybe you're looking at two and a half months plus or minus, I think sometime your staff should maybe partner with the county. We should have a workshop for our businesses that they can attend and that they can answer questions, whether that be via Zoom. Um, because I know it's maybe hard to schedule because of work hours, but I think there needs to be something like that. So I agree with Charles. It's it's a pre-type thing. We're not waiting till after we pass the ordinance to go, this is what you need to do. But this way, we're getting feedback from our businesses before we even get to the point where we pass it. Um, so yeah, so the um, those are my thoughts. Again, I just think we have a long ways to go.
Yeah. And and Fred, with that, ultimately, we're we're not mandated by any amount of time. There's a time component about cost. And it's like, at some point, I think I can absorb a six thousand dollar uptick fee to allow it to be accepted by our local businesses. Knowing that the amount of tax revenue that they generate in a successful business model is so much more paramount than than pushing it forward to basically save a little bit, right? So like, like, that's what I'm hearing. And I think that that's important for staff to understand is are we okay with basically taking the amount of time that it takes to develop, to work with the county, work with, see changes at the state, federal level, whatever it is? But that we don't need or want to have staff do that. And I personally do not want to force that on my staff or or make that decision in that time it to that timeline currently.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. I think the timeline has to be what staff feels comfortable with, not what not to push up against a deadline. If you, we can't make it, we can't make it. Um, and I don't want to do a thing where we're rushing this just to meet the May tenth deadline. And I mean, we still, I mean, we still may wind up achieving what we need to achieve, what the county wants, would like us to achieve. It just may be on a different timeline. And I mean, it doesn't matter how we get there, as long as we get there at some point in time.
If I can, I know I'm taking a second turn, but um, so as far as the anxiety of doing this, I kind of get that. Except that San Anselmo has already done it and San Anselmo is small mom and pop type restaurants. They don't have any big brand name chain restaurants in their town entirely. And and it's working there. I know because I go to these restaurants in San Anselmo a lot and they're popular. And I think sometimes restaurants that do more sustainable practices become more popular. I know we have chosen and during COVID, we learned to choose some of our takeout restaurants in part based on you know, who was going to give us a big load of plastic and styrofoam and 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 all of that and make us feel, you know, not so great about what we just did. So I think it's a marketing thing, not only for restaurants individually, but for the town of San and for the town of Corder Madera to get on this. And I agree, it would be great if these solutions were coming from a higher level and they had the bioplastics thing either figured out or not. But you know, the old saying, we got to think globally, but act locally. We we really, I think, um, I think people want progressive environmentally conscious decisions. And I think we should not let perfect get in the way of good. And I think this is a good start and it's one more big stake to go on Adam's plate, um, that he's got a, has the opportunity to figure it out with a plastic fork. Um, but I I just, I really think we should do this. I think we should be, yes, we can and uh, and figure out a way to make it work.
Communication.
Sorry, just one quick question for staff. For like coffee, like in the office, in the office and like at the rec center for staff or DPW, what are you using?
Probably some lined cups that
Right in front of you. It's right in front of you.
Yeah, there you go.
And you can also use one of these.
No, I, and I guess sounds like there's some ability to, uh, we heard from the county tonight to work on some of those exemptions for town sponsored events and town. I guess how it applies to our ourselves without getting enforcement. So I think there's some questions just around how changing the ordinance ordinance affects the county's ability to enforce the ordinance in town that we still need to sort of figure out. Um, it's still unclear, I think, to staff here how that will work. Um, so deadline or not, just even if we go beyond the deadline, we want to sort of craft something.
Right. And and I think that just to speak to that, I think there's a a difference between a high level uh, informational presentation given by the county and the level of depth that I hope that staff would bring back to us to really look at this and understand and share with our uh local businesses before we finalize it. So really what I'm hearing is is that, you know, it's not that we're agreeing to it tonight. We're agreeing to continue to develop it and understand it instead of just rejecting it, right? So, um, and it's to to speak to Pat, I mean, it it's great. I'm glad you're pitching it. Uh, you know, the environment's wonderful, but also I think there's a political decision about how much we mandate on the individual. And it might be that basically I feel like but when when franchised businesses like Amy's that have branded themselves as a sustainable company say that doing food service, they've tried their hardest and they're not able to do it and they're questioning this. I, they know better than me. I know that for a fact. Amy's is a better organic. You know, I worked at organic food distributor. I worked at Falcon Trading Company, you know, I I got to college at night. I know what I'm talking about. I'm telling you, it's a very difficult problem. And so basically until I know that it it's an actual achievable goal, why comp complicate local business? And that's, you know, that's just to being a independent versus, you know, uh, you know, libertarian kind of attitude about how to regulate. Um, and so we I might not see that eye to eye on that. I might not even agree to it as it develops, but that that's just me personally about private business and regulation and and just how much I'm comfortable at the local level doing that, right?
But but if I may, it is the direction our businesses are going in anyway, as we've heard, most of them are already.
Why can't they do that themselves? Compliance. Why do we have to force it on the ones that don't?
Well, I think that the ones that are doing it are showing that it can be done. And that it's not necessarily a burden. And even in the case that we've heard, in some cases, there's cost savings to be realized by not throwing away plastic but washing silverware. Um, so I I I that's our job. Our job is
Right, but I I've not hearing that. If they come to me and and I'll say that, like, you know, on the chamber and and that type of thing, I'd be happy to do it. If I really feel like the anxiety is relieved, then I think I could do that. But that's not what I heard tonight. So right now I'm just saying it's not a done deal.
I understand. Okay. I just want to, there's, there's, can I offer a bunch of, there's a
Yeah, I I hold on. So Amy, are you saying, so I think that there were other members of the public that also wanted to speak and it's it's it, I think, I think we'll open it up to all the public, let public speak. And then of course, you know, you you can also speak to it, but this time I think the council's uh, being counseled on that. So opening it up to public comment. Is there any public comment in the room?
Thank you. And I I appreciate the seriousness that you guys have given this. I mean, I think it's important and I think it's it's important for for all of us to figure this out, right? But how we figure it out, I think is, and I I right online with with your mayor, with your your thoughts. Um, I don't, I don't personally like when people tell me what I have to do. Um, I like when there's a motive to do something and I do it because it's it's the right thing to do. I don't have a horse in this race. It doesn't affect my business.
Are you? Yeah, but also you're on the uh, Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber of Commerce. So, but um, with that, um, I think that um, if we encourage people by maybe having a sticker on their business because I think uh, you were saying that people, this is where people want to do it and people want to support this. Right? And so I think by putting a sticker saying that we comply with all these regulations and rules and getting the plastic out, then people will naturally go there and support their business. And then that way there, uh, then 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 the businesses see that, hey, this is something that the that the community wants. And so that way everybody wins and they can spend the money that goes towards it. So anyhow, and the other thing that I want to make sure though, is this is for everyone, meaning it's not just small business, but big business as well. Meaning like Safeway has to to abide by these things as well. I'm a little, little curious on how the city wouldn't abide by it, but that's a little, that's a little little awkward, I think. But uh, but anyhow, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, uh, horrible public speaker. Uh, obviously I'm picking a pickle, Gormadera. For my whole life, I've lived here, grew up going to the farmer's market. Done everything sustainable possible. Um, we started using fiber compostables many years ago. I use crap paper bags. I use butcher paper. Um, we do use some bioplastics. Uh, we adopted everything a long time ago. My only real issue with this is the county hasn't figured out how to handle the green waste program yet. We were told years ago, use these bins. And then people throw garbage in and they come to tell me a couple of months ago, they're going to find me. But I don't have control of that bin. You guys are asking us to do stuff when you don't have your own side figured out. And that's the problem I have with this. I would love to go full forward with this. But you can't control what you already have. You haven't talked to the businesses about this. Who have you talked to? Where was the working groups? Who did you get involved? What distributors? Nothing. This was past three and a half years ago and three months before they actually adopted. Suddenly, we're going to talk. Who did the work on this? Organic farmers? We're getting the benefit, so that's just my two cents. I'm fully supportive, but I don't think the work's been done. I don't think the Minnesota has been contacted. I mean, that's just I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Excellent public speaking. Thank you.
Um, we had hands raised from Chris Davis and Renaud de Rosier again.
Since it's a reiteration of opening up public, is it a reset on that?
Yes.
I think that ultimately this is an important issue and and I I would like them to be able to speak further with the county about this.
Okay. And and Mary, I would like to point out, I I saw some hands go up and down from other attendees too while we were talking. So
It is open.
Last public
I would like this to be the last. So and I really encourage everyone to just let it out so that we can move forward in the best way for everyone.
Okay, we'll start with Chris Davis.
Uh, hello again, everybody. Um, I've had this on speaker through the evening and my entire family who are involved with my small business, including my teenage daughters. Uh, we're eager to speak on behalf of Teaspoon. And my daughter Charlotte has something to say that she would like to share because I think we're trying to represent or preserve her generation and generations behind her. And I'd like her to speak. Her name is Charlotte. Thank you.
Okay, um, hi, uh, I think this is a really great idea. Um, I just, I noticed that you guys said a lot of things about bioplastics. Um, which honestly aren't that effective because they only compost in like very controlled environments and they're not really made out of sustainable materials. But there's a different kind of plastic called biodegradable plastic. Uh, sounds the same, it's different. Um, that one's actually made out of usually like five percent corn starch or vegetable oil. Uh, it does compost though, um,
And they are see-through.
And they are see-through. So I I don't know if you guys have ever looked into that instead of bioplastic.
Dana, have you looked into that? Can you speak to the difference of a bioplastic and a biodegradable plastic?
It's, it's my understanding that there is still, it is still not accepted at WM Earth Care because there are still residual compounds in it that would not qualify for organic, but I would have to do more research.
I think I think that would be warranted, right? I think that this is a situation where that kind of research is warranted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we continually try and revise that list about what is accepted at WM Earth Care. So if if there is something that would qualify, it would go on that list.
Really? Thank you very much.
Okay, um, next we will have Renaud de Rosier speak. Okay, whenever you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Hey, thanks for uh, hearing from me again. Um, I I just want to quickly comment from Amy's perspective. Uh, the mayor said one thing that I think is is really important here that gets lost in it. To hear that like businesses will save money by changing their business model. Um, I think really comes off as tone deaf from the perspect- perspective of an operator. To your point, Mayor, um, putting in dishwashers and training new staff. I mean, it's a completely different uh, approach, right? To uh, ask a business is currently not set up for that to to do so. So I I thank you for bringing that up. I think it's really important that we not flippantly say, hey, you should do this. You'll you'll save a bunch of money. It's a huge burden and even the staffing implication, as you point out, is going to be significant. I want to pivot. In addition to working for Amy's, I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Biodegradable Products Institute, BPI, which is the certifying body for compostable products in North America. And from that perspective, I want to correct some misinformation that I heard earlier. Um, I think that it's really important that we be precise in this conversation and to talk about certified compostables being a contaminant to a compost pile is inaccurate. The fact that WM doesn't want to take these materials has to do with, as you pointed out accurately, the fact that they are CDFA listed on their compost, right? So this is a regulatory thing. It's it's not a performance based thing. There's no testing of materials. It's not a contaminant to the stream. Um, as as the uh, the young girl who just spoke correctly pointed out, um, you know, these are modern materials that we have to have in our toolkit if we're going to be serious about tackling the plastic waste problem, right? Um, if you talk about actual compostable materials as opposed to, you know, loosely defined bioplastics, which I think you were referring Dana probably to the class of materials known as oxo biodegradables, which are deeply problematic. They're also illegal in the state of California. And they do result in in microplastics. But anything that's actually certified compostable and BPI certified accordingly will break down completely into to to CO2 and and water, right? So it's a question of the facility not wanting to take it. It's not about these being contaminated. I also want to call out um, the the cups on on the the table that I see. Um, if we want to tackle those seriously, the only way to do so is to accept modern compostable materials. Otherwise, they will remain on that exempt list forever. We'll keep producing that trash. So those water cups, I'm not trying to call out the the council members, but those, instead of being fossil line, could be lined with compostable materials and they could be accepted in the stream if we chose to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Amy from Flores. And whenever you're ready.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you for giving me a moment. Um, I think we all have to open um, open our minds and think about, I, nothing is a hundred percent. Um, there's always pros and cons to everything, right? As someone had touched on about not setting a deadline, um, but you ultimately have to set deadlines. Otherwise, we as humans are not going to bother doing it. Um, Dana, kudos to you with the county of Marin and and trying to implement something within the full, within the full county. Um, at Flores, we do, we we do a ton of takeaway business out of the restaurant, um, much more than our partners in the city do. Um, we are already doing a lot of compostable takeaway items, um, um, stuff for our takeout orders as well as our um, doggy bag uh, containers for people that are eating in the restaurant that can't finish and take stuff home. Our only thing with, um, we do have some plastics still because we have pizzole, which is the soup. Um, and our ceviche, those are the items, but but my chef has looked into ordering the items that would be in compliance with what you guys are trying to change. Yes, it's significantly more expensive, but that's, it's a shame, but that's something that we need to implement if we if we all want the same goal as doing good for the environment. And yes, we've all struggled, businesses and um, residents and consumers and everyone during COVID, but it's a shame how much we've gone backwards because of COVID as far as caring for the environment with all the disposables being, you know, the plastic gloves that everybody was wearing and the face mask and all those disposables that you find. Not even in the trash, people just throwing them out on the ground on the street because humans are not always very respectful, right? Um, I know someone here had touched on uh, what was the pig in the pickle about the bins that they have that, you know, people, sometimes people are, consumers are throwing things in the bins that don't belong. Um, and that's Um and that's not, it's it's kind of a, we we have to monitor that at our restaurant with. Even with our employees, sometimes we we compost, we have a huge compostable bin by our dish machine where all the food waste goes into that. Sometimes our staff winds up throwing something in there that doesn't belong. And sometimes we don't catch it before it goes out into the compost bin outside and then we get that fine. Um but it's our job to look in that bin every once in a while and try and pull things out that don't belong. Um it's it's difficult. It's difficult on everybody. And yes, it's more staffing. And yes, we are still short-staffed and I am. Working like crazy and now I've come to this, I've joined this meeting for the hour and a half that's been after working, you know, nine, 10-hour day at the restaurant. Um but it's it's, we all have to work a lot harder and spend more money to try and. Make a better future for everybody and and care for our environment and what we're living in. Um but it's not all going to be a hundred percent, but we're gonna, um our business is going to try the best we can to comply with what you need. Um but I do have one question. Sorry, I'm out of time there. Um I had heard a May, May 10th deadline, but I also heard a November 10th deadline. I missed what the May one was.
But the May is for for us to adopt the county ordinance, the November is when the county, if adopted, would begin enforcement.
Okay, copy that.
So thank you. Uh is there any other?
Um that was our last public comment and I checked for emails and we don't have additional email public comment.
Okay, um and did the county want to, uh was there any other further uh discussion that the county wanted to make?
Were available, you know, to discuss with staff as needed.
I just wanted, I just wanted to add, there's a, there's a bunch of studies locally about how people, how the businesses do save. And there was one, I think, but I forgot. Um. If I remember it, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, Mary, you didn't have your mic on, but.
Yeah, so what I heard is that the county will share more uh local examples of cost savings and other um information to the local. Government that then might make its way to the uh commercial entities that would be affected, so.
Right.
Okay, um so now we need to determine direction for staff. So is it that we would like to continue to pursue? And uh have staff research uh the adoption of this ordinance or modifications to it. Um and give a re- a staff report? Is that basically like what what would come next? Um and then see if there's any other advisory boards that it the that might affect or, I mean, I I feel like. It's either we consider it more or not is really like at this level we need to decide.
Yeah, I think that's a starting point and then and then certainly um. We'd have to put together some sort of plan um. Work plan or something that would involve several different steps, outreach, et cetera, et cetera, to how to get from here to there. So um, you know, it it. That would be helpful if that's right, the council would want us to do, we can certainly do that and come back.
So the thing I haven't heard is any of the um affected businesses, which are some of our larger ones. Uh say that it, they're not interested in exploring and and partnering uh on on this. Um one, one thing I did hear from one uh was this idea of an opt-in ordinance? Is there basically ones where you can self-elect for the inspections? And you know, like basically, and then allow others to not opt in? From a, from a legal standpoint?
I I I think that the sort of more. The more way to look at it is it would be a a sustainable retailer program where um if you. Do a certain number of things, then you would get the sticker. Um that's been used, you know, in terms of like lead certification. That's kind of an example of it. Um but it wouldn't be this county ordinance.
It's a carrot, it, that's a carrot solution instead of the stick solution is what I'm hearing, but they can't be the same thing.
Well, I.
Maybe.
I I think that that the town has several options. One is that the the town could comply with the new state law. And choose to enforce the state law because as I understand it, the county is refusing to. Enforce the state law if the town doesn't pass the county's ordinance.
Do they actually have the right to refuse to do that? Because it is a higher body. Wait, I I think the county's also shaking their head, but.
I, I think that's a. Good question.
Yeah, so so.
So there's that, I I I think, you know, staff can come back with a report, but I think ultimately. What I'm hearing from the county and I'm willing to hear otherwise is that. While they're okay with us changing provisions relating to the town and and I don't mean to imply by that that the town wouldn't. Want to comply with sustainable regulations. They just. Don't want to be fined by the county. Um but I I'm not hearing from the county. That the county is willing to enforce an ordinance that other than the town. Aspects, the town changes. So.
That we have to accept the one as written.
Perhaps the county can clarify that, but i- in that case, I'm not sure what the directive to staff is in terms of. Working with the county to make changes.
I didn't see it in the presentation with the counties coming with an ass. They're just ultimately, I think, uh presenting it to to us currently to think about, but. We can open it up to the county to respond now if they're of the capacity to answer that. From a legal standpoint, you know, code enforcement. If not, we can get clarification later.
Yeah, I can jump, I can jump in part of it, um, Tom Mayor is. You know, one thing I think Dana can also jump in, but we were look, really looking at consistency. Throughout the the county and city, the towns. Because we got to remember that, you know, the the folks in my office, the inspectors that are going to go out, you know, we've got over. What thirteen, fourteen hundred food facilities, you know, all permitted. So the consistency is 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 a really great avenue when we're trying to get the outreach and the message out. So I think you had one question of, I forget what the bill number was, twelve. I don't want to guess like twelve seventy-six to have to do with part of the utensils. Yeah. Or that would be, that's a separate bill that is not really directly related to environmental health services. It's essentially a state bill, so that would be. You know, the prerogative of any county, city or town to adopt that part, so. For environmental services to like jump back from enforcement of the ordinance, but then step into another bill. With a totally different format, uh different type of utensil requirements. It does be very difficult to have two different. Separate types of systems with two different bills.
I'm sorry, if you could just clarify that, I I believe the state law is the state law. And restaurants are subject to the state law. So, I I, as I understood, the county is, it was a layer. On top of the state law, but not that the county could replace the state law.
That that is correct. So the state law twelve seventy-six is just focused on utensils and the county's ordinance. Includes those requirements and then layers on a little bit more, but twelve seventy-six directs. A city or a county to name their enforcement agency. It does not automatically say that the county enforces on behalf of all jurisdictions. It is a totally separate. Bill. What we offered with this is that since ours is encompasses those requirements and layers on top. That we would be willing, if you adopt that, the model ordinance to enforce both because they are layered. But if the jurisdiction didn't want to, then they would still be responsible for twelve seventy-six.
Yeah, so so I think that that's an important thing for the council that I I'm aware of, that I'm not sure everybody else is. Uh either in in the public or on the council because of the the content of the presentation is. Where the state's uh utensil uh regulations and 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 relationship to uh organics. And then uh the county and what they're layering on top and where that division is. Um i- if we're already going to be, you know, have to enforce the state, like what is the additional? What are the things that the county has added? Uh because that wasn't clear in the presentation. Um and so I I do need that. That's one of the things.
I think we can come back.
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 come back with some clarity. And there's been a lot of, obviously, a lot of questions, a lot of um asked for. Um more information, which we can come back to with a fuller picture after we've had a chance to really. So that this with the county staff and and.
So could we have another, is the goal, like, do you think it would be better as a town manager to have another presentation with more information after? Further discussion based on the feedback now.
I think we had a great.
Towards the ordinance.
Well, I. I think there's going to be a a sort of interme- intermediary step where we can come back with. Answers to some of these questions about enforcement, what we and and maybe provide you specific options based on what we heard tonight about um. Ways to proceed and get some more clarification, clarification, exactly how we want to proceed through uh the next steps.
Right, so that's very clear and I think that I personally would give a thumbs up to that and and looking to us, the council, they're all shaking their head. So you have a consensus with five that we would like to pursue that.
That's, that's. Great, I appreciate the direction and and thanks for the really um. Very informative and um informed conversation. I think that's, it was great to hear. From from everybody here tonight.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss and present. Okay, um so with that, I'll close item three A. Um and move on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They'll be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. Um anyone would like to remove an item? Anyone from the public? Anyone from staff? If I could get a motion?
I'll go ahead and move uh four eight through four H for approval. Second.
Can I get a rule call?
And for the record, we did not have any public comment on the consent calendar. Um council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Avasio.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Um that motion passes.
Okay, uh so closing item number four, moving to number five, public hearing, seeing none, we'll close that, moving on to item number six, which is business items. Uh six A, consideration and possible adoption of resolution number thirteen twenty twenty-three. To rename the planning and building department to community development department. Adam, is there a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is the second um. Uh second reading of this business item uh before the town council to. Uh as the title uh discusses to rename the planning and building department to community, community development department, create a new position classification titled. Community, community development director. Uh with the salary range of thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars to sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars per month, which is the same as the current. Um salary range for the planning and building director. Uh and amend compensation schedule C, uh department head employees to add the new position and salary range, so. As per uh pol- council policy, this is a two-meeting item. Um I'm not gonna, uh we we explained uh. At the first meeting, sort of the rationale and reasoning behind um this request um to make this change. Happy to answer questions if you have them or want me to reiterate some of that discussion. Happy to do so. Um. Uh but with that, I'll just stop my report and ask if the council has any questions.
Does council have any questions?
Hey, just two quick ones. Um can you just describe the interview process and recruitment process? Because I know recruiting has been difficult at times.
Um, well, as we discussed earlier today, recruiting, there's a number of different strategies we could take. I'll, I'll, I'm still. Considering the different options um. With interview processes, I mean, I I don't, that as well, I mean, typically, we're gonna. Do multiple rounds of interviews and have a diverse range of panelists that sort of can speak to. Have different perspectives on on sort of the qualifications of of applicants. Uh I'm hopeful for a robust pool of applicants that would respond. I think it's an attractive position. I I know we're tackling some. Ex- you know, very big things in town related to. Community development, planning, um where, you know, the council's been vocal about building a building department team as well. Um we have ha- all the plans in the world you can, you can look to to sort of have a roadmap on what to work on, so I think. There's a lot of uh good things to to sink um. A candidate's teeth into, and so we'll just have, you know, I. Uh there's more work to be done there, um but. Happy to come back to the council with an update of that at some point in the future and specifics on the process, if that's helpful. Um so ultimately, I'm going to be very obviously heavily involved uh with that recruitment. And um look forward to that process and and finding a great um addition to the team.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay, uh so I'll open it up to public comment.
Um at this time, we do not have any hand, it needs to be a Zoom and we do not.
We, we did have one written comment.
Have emailed, but comment.
Jim Andrews had a written comment.
Okay, I'm not sure that that came in today at some point, so.
So we wouldn't read that for the record.
Happy to, if we didn't include it in the packet or didn't get it to, we may not have gotten it to Lorena, so we can read it.
Yeah.
We can access it. Do you have that, Rebecca? Sorry, only because it was a a topic that I thought was at least in in in.
I can generally speak to what he.
Speak to it, yeah.
Um it it was essentially that, I think, um a comment from Jim Andrews, you didn't get it, all right? Jim Andrews um comment was to include in the job description explicitly. Uh that one of the duties would be to preserve, I want to use the right word, but I think it was preserve the town's tax base. As part of the role. Um I think um. You know, I just, I I would note that the, there's several references in the job description. Certainly, part of it is, there's an economic development role. Which is sort of another way of saying um that. Ensuring that our um local economy is thriving.
Right.
Um and producing tax revenue, um which I think is actually more. More in line with what a community development director would be focused on, whereas. My role now as town manager is going to be specifically looking at the tax revenues of those businesses um. Um but. Uh in in any case, I think that was the comment by um Jim Andrews.
Yeah.
It was a couple of sentences. I can just read it. Um, the comment says, I note that staff has recommended that the planning department be renamed community development department. And its head be retitled as community development director. If you are going to make this change, please modify the community development director's job description to make explicit. That one of the community development director's goals is maintaining and enhancing the town's tax base. Many of the activities listed for the community development director position could impact future town revenue streams. Position holders should be cognizant of the potential tax impacts when weighing the various factors guiding their decision-making. Thank you, James Andrews.
Yeah. Discuss that. Well, um. Okay, so is there any other public comment?
No additional public comment.
Okay, seeing none here again, uh we'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for discussion.
I'll make it simple. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution number thirteen two oh twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, uh.
Um council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Avasio.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to six B, this is the discussion and possible action by the mayor to appoint council members to fill the role of council member liaison to town boards. Commissions and committees. In particular, I think this is for liaisons. Uh does staff want to address it or? Okay, so ultimately, there were five liaison positions.
That's correct.
Yeah, and can you remind us?
Sure.
Oregon.
Yeah, so I'll do, um there's the park and rec commission. Um the climate action committee. Flood control board.
Bicycle pedestrian advisor.
But that's good, but, okay, and the last one is the.
Sales pack citizens oversight committee.
Correct.
Okay, so. In, you know, it was, it was, um, I didn't know that there would be so much uh 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 interest in them. And so I I needed a little time to kind of understand how I might go about assigning um. The first iteration. And so I I wanted to speak to that a little bit. I think that. As being on council, we're all volunteers and I think it's important that all these committees are understood as council members. And so therefore, I do not see this as a permanent position in which, once you're appointed, you continue to. Uh remain at them. And also, I would recommend that if you come from one of these backgrounds or interests that you try to break out of your shell. And actually understand the entirety of the functioning bodies of government that we uh appoint and then take uh information from. So. When assigning this, know that I'd like to see rotation and recommend that further the council consider that moving forward. Um and that it isn't just a fixed position. Um with that, there was a discussion about two council interested in parks and rec. Uh, because there was an informal, uh, discussion that was going on, um, and this was to formalize that. I would like to continue to allow Fred to stay as the park and rec liaison. Um, this, this year, uh, with the hope that others would be, uh, given that opportunity moving forward. Um, for climate adaptation, that was, uh, Eli. Yes, so Eli for climate. Um, I was going to take the, uh, BPAC. I heard Pat have an interest in the sales tax. And, um, if you wouldn't mind taking on the flood. Um, I think that then we have our assignments for liaison.
Take it on the flood.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
I think that the rotation is a great idea because I'm thinking in. Four years in a term on council, I will have learned about four different areas of the town that are really important. So I think it would strengthen the council greatly for us each to have sort of experience in, in each of the areas. So I love the rotation idea. Really good one.
Thank you for that feedback. Appreciate it. Okay, so with that, can we close, uh, four H? Does staff have, uh, the information needed? Do we need to approve it?
Just for the record, there was no public comment on that item.
Yeah, and also do we need to actually, uh, to prove it is, no, liaisons are just assignments, so.
We, we do have a hand.
Excellent.
Right now.
Public, uh, comment. I'm sorry for that.
Okay, it is from James Jordan. And. James, whenever you're, you're ready, you should, you can, um, go ahead and start your time. You should be able to speak.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have a few comments on this topic. And I think what the mayor just said is a good idea. Rotate the assignments of liaison. Town departments. And a good time to start rotating, uh, would be right now, I think, because we have two new council members, one who expressed an interest in parks. And recreation and it's good to have, uh, new input and, and, and new ideas. And. If we look at what happened over the past year and a half. Developing the, uh, new parts and recreation plan, I think. In my opinion, there was a series of irregularities that occurred. And I can go through those. And I wondered about how that happened or what was the source of that. Ms. Howe was new to the position of parks director. So I don't know that she was a source, but the council person who was assigned to parks and recreation. Had been the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I wonder if it was that person. Who was responsible for those irregularities. And those irregularities in, include a whole series of things. And I think i- if you followed, uh. What was disclosed in my public information request, public records request. That from the start, the push was on to promote. The installation of an artificial turf soccer field in the town park. That wasn't supported by the ETC town survey that six hundred and eighty-five households responded to. It was nowhere near the top of the list, but through each step of the process, the main proposal was putting the. Artificial turf park, uh, uh, field in the tur- in, in the town park. And then at the same time, this public process was going on, there was a secret process going on behind the scenes. And the secret process was that representatives from the town man, town of Cortumadera were meeting with the school. Department to plan for and. Uh, make a process for installing an artificial, uh, turf soccer field in the town park. And I think sometime the town government has to account for that. And the time is now to start and there should be a new, a town council liaison to the parks and recreation department. So I appreciate your consideration of that. I could go into more detail if you like, but. I, I think you know what I'm talking about, but the, the time for a new start is now. It's not to have the same person. Uh, as the liaison, it's been the same person for the last year and a half or two, that created the problem that we're dealing with now. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, James.
Uh, we do not have any additional public comment this item.
So, uh, I've already stated how I would like the assignments to go. I appreciate, uh, public feedback. Um, ultimately, I could address some of the public comments, but I don't feel it's appropriate, uh, after the decision's been made. Um, so, and, um. You know, uh, we'll just leave it at that. So. Can we close six B now?
Yes, we can move on to the next item.
All right, thank you. So item number seven, council reports, uh, moving on to, uh, town manager report.
I think it's, I, I would just like to, uh, report. Just actually just thought of this right now, so I'm gathering my thoughts for a second, but I do think. This would be a good opportunity to, uh, let the council know. There's been several, uh, instances of. The Marin IJ reporting on other, um, councils and their sort of. Uh, vetting and, and decision-making process with respect to the Ross Valley Fire Department and sort of, uh, some deadlines that are on there. Um, on their plate with respect to their current contract with the county of Marin. Um, this is sort of a necessary process that they need to do. Part of that discussion is involving. Um, potentially one option, which is to explore, um, uh, a shared services. Um. The prospect of shared ser- services, I should say, with. Um, the, the, the central brand fire department. And so you've probably have seen some of that in the, the, uh, newspaper articles. I just want to be clear with the council that. From where we stand, both, um, the city manager at Larkspur, and we've talked about this at the fire council, um, at the last meeting. This is very early in the, in the process, um, in terms of actually exploring this. Um, we've, haven't had any discussions about financial arrangements or anything like that, and even discussions regarding staffing, potentially. How staffing might work is, is at its infancy. So, um. We will be reporting and, and sort of. Exploring those conversations and having more conversations as this moves forward. It does, it is very important, obviously for both. Cortumadera, Larkspur and our central run fire department, there are some natural sort of, um. Uh, and sort of benefits that one could foresee and having a very, obviously a strong. Um, fire department throughout Ross Valley makes some sense, but anyways, I just wanted to report. But, um, don't want anybody to get out and ahead of, um, where we are, actually are, I think we're farther down the road than we actually are on this. So, um, with that, I'll just, um, end my report and I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Uh, I'm sure done here.
Yeah, so I attend a central room police authority council, um, age friendly Cortumadera and mark your calendars, Eli, I like this one. Uh, eight twenty, August twentieth is when we're going to have our celebration for the night. Thank you. Um, and we're hoping to do it at the community center this year on the outside patio, if all goes well. Um, and also attended, uh, MWPA, the only thing there which they all hear a meeting next month is about the evacuation software. Um, that I mentioned before, and just one note on. I, I think it's going to be the way for all council members, but. Our lobby's needs used to be via Zoom. At the end of this month, they all, at least for me, they're all in person. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that got out there. Thanks.
Not too much to report. Had a good fire council meeting, had a very long MCE board meeting, um, had a good CMSA meeting. The one, uh, kind of exciting thing I did want to report is over the last two months, we've had four of our five. Marine municipal water district board members come and tour the central marine sanitation agency plant. Uh, which is great. I think that's an important, uh, it's important that those two agencies have a good working relationship, um, as they're both. You know, two of the most important water handling agencies in Marin County. And historically, I think that relationship had kind of not really existed at the board level. So I was really grateful to the four directors that came through for tours. I'm sad to say the only one who has not come through happens to be our representative on the Marin Waters Board. Uh, in my five years on the council, I've not yet been able to make contact with them. So if, if you're listening, Mr. Russell, you're welcome to come to the plant. We'd love to have you. Uh, that is all. Thank you.
Rosa? Excellent, alright.
I have nothing to report this week either.
Okay, um, I also attended, uh, the, the police council, MC, and the, uh, fire council. At the fire council, I was appointed, um, in my first meeting, the vice chair, vice, vice president, vice board. Member, uh, position. Um, so, yeah, um, uh, lots of exciting things going on there, so, um. Yeah, with that, I'll, I'll close, uh, the reports. Uh, I guess. I do want to add one more thing, uh, we, we, uh. It's going to be very windy for the next few days. They're, uh, very aggressive gust and they're trending beyond the forecast. Um, so, uh, please be careful, um, out there, because this is dangerous. And it will be snow at low elevations forecast to a thousand feet or lower. So there'll be ice on the roads and other conditions we're not used to, so please be careful this week. Um, so with that, we'll close the council reports and move to item number eight, which is a discussion of draft agenda for upcoming town council. Uh, is everybody okay with the agenda? All right, with that, we'll close that. And for that, number nine, adjournment.